This is a special meeting. Actually, it was one of our regular meetings, but the subject before us is special in a couple of reasons. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees for Springfield Township. I'm calling the meeting to order. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and we ask everybody to join with us, if you will, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Someday I'll learn it, exactly. Mrs. Price, you want to call the roll?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Deloro?
Here.
Mr. Spickert?
Here.
As I said, this is a special meeting for a couple of reasons. First on our agenda is an action by this board to appoint officers to a command position as sergeants. It comes as a result of these two gentlemen's achievements on behalf of the police force and the citizens. It comes after review for recommendations of the command staff, evaluations of the work that they've done on behalf of the citizens, and in final recommendation by our chief and the captain. Mrs. Chapman, do you want to do the honor of...
Sir. I move to promote Officer Michael Roberts to police sergeant effective 5/29/23.
I would second that motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
I move to promote Officer Sean Brady to police sergeant effective 5/30/23.
I would second that motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Chief, will you do the honor?
Sure. My name is Jack Simone. I'm the police chief here in Springfield Township. On behalf of myself and the Board of Trustees, we want to welcome you here this evening. This is a special evening for us. It is a great opportunity. We get to promote two really good officers. They've done a great job for our community and we get to celebrate another officer's retirement. Before I start, I want to introduce the Board of Trustees and Mr. Spickert. Mr. Spickert is our zoning officer. Mr. Deloro, Mr. Young, and Ms. Chapman, or not zoning officer, I just said fiscal officer, sorry. Thanks, Kelly. Mr. Deloro, Mr. Young, and Ms. Chapman are Board of Trustees. What our agenda's going to be tonight is that we're going to do a swearing-in service or for the ceremony for the two officers getting promoted. Then we're going to recognize Sergeant East. After that's done, the board will give you a opportunity to take some pictures if you'd like to do that. We have refreshments out in the hallway. So I do want to thank tonight the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is very supportive of our department. They provide us the resources, the tools necessary to keep our police department strong. So thank you, Board of Trustees, for all your support for our officers. Tonight also, before we get started, I want to recognize our officers. They come out here every day, every shift, and are committed and do a great job for this community. So for Springfield Police Officers, thank you. So like I said, tonight we're going to celebrate Sergeant East's career. Before that, we're going to recognize Officer Brady and Officer Roberts for their opportunity to get promoted here at the police department. I'll start with Michael Roberts. Michael Roberts, where are you at, buddy? Who did you bring here with you tonight?
My grandfather, my grandfather. My parents, my grandmother, my wife, and my mother-in-law.
Okay. Well, you got to tell us who they are.
My grandfather, my parents, my grandmother, my wife, and my mother-in-law.
Okay. Michael Roberts started his career in Springfield as a part-time police officer in 2016. He was promoted to full-time in October 2019. Officer Roberts, along with his patrol assignments, handles another, a number of other responsibilities. Some of those are, he helps us outfit the new police cruisers. Anytime we have used equipment, we try to sell it on a government auction site. Officer Roberts handles that and just basically whatever else that we need. He also handles another big duty that I think he's going to continue to do, is anytime that we tow vehicles, they have to be impounded, there's a lot of paperwork has to be done with the tow companies, Officer Roberts handles that for us as well. Sean, where are you at? Sean, who'd you bring with you tonight?
My kids, my brother-in-law.
Sean Brady started his career as a part-time police officer in 2016. He was promoted to full-time in January 2018. Officer Brady, along with his patrol assignments, he's obviously our K-9 officer. He's also a tactical member of the Metro SWAT team. Okay? Not surprised that we're standing here tonight recognizing these two young men because of the job that they do. As far as proactive policing, they lead the department most every year in their activity. Their activity results in the seizure of illegal controlled substance, recovered stolen vehicles, weapons, and it results in a number of felony arrests throughout the year. So these two young men really do a nice job for us. What I would like to do is have Sean Brady, Officer Brady, for the next 30 seconds. Officer Roberts, come on up here, please, so we can do your swearing-in.
I asked that somebody to say you want to hear this. This is a big deal. All right.
You guys stand right here. Place me. Sean, raise your right hand. All right, state your name.
I'm Sean Brady.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
of America
of America
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the State of Ohio
of the State of Ohio
and will faithfully discharge the duties
and will faithfully discharge the duties
of police armed
of police armed
for Springfield Township
for Springfield Township
Southern County
Southern County
State of Ohio
State of Ohio
and that I will protect the rights
and that I will protect the rights
lives and property
lives and property
of all citizens
of all citizens
and uphold the honor
and uphold the honor
of the police profession
of the police profession
with my life and me
with my life and me
Congratulations. Yeah, you guys can sit down. I won't make you stand up here. Great job, guys, really. You should feel really good about that accomplishment. Important day for our department, an important day for our community, and obviously an exciting day for now Sergeant Roberts, Sergeant Brady's family. Michael and Sean, take time to enjoy your achievement because the work has just begun for you guys. Sean and Michael, with years of experience and training, you both have demonstrated character traits and knowledge that's prepared you for this role. This job is a calling that very few people are willing to do. I want to recognize you both for your achievements and you're willing to continue in this role with our department. Springfield Township Patch is not specific to you, but rather this community that you've just sworn an oath to lead and protect. Take pride in your new role at the police department. Understand that regardless of the personalities, the characters, where the officers came from, you are now leading one team. I've said this before, don't put people in boxes. Now is your opportunity to take them out of their boxes, remove those labels, give everybody a fresh start and a clean slate. Most importantly, your badge, your leader. Very few ever get the opportunity or the privilege to serve in a leadership role in the police department. The badge over your heart grants you the right to enforce the law. Protect the weak, defend the innocent, and even take away a person's freedom. So lead by example. As you continue in your leadership role, continue to lead by example because everybody's watching you. You are here, you've assumed an awesome responsibility that you should never underestimate and always appreciate. Take pride in wearing that gold shield. The positive image of the police of the United States is more critical now than ever in recent history. Building community trust with our department is of utmost importance. You serve everyone equally. You serve everyone fairly. You serve the people that like you and you serve the people that don't like you. Not many people are willing to serve in that role as a leader. So I want to thank you both for that. Always treat people with dignity and respect. Lead with integrity. Serve with honor. Remember that you matter. Congratulations to Sergeant Michael Roberts, Sergeant Sean Brady.
Thank you, Chief. We also have the honor this evening of giving recognition to somebody that's given a lot of years of service to our community. I was going to say a little tongue-in-cheek, we lose Sergeant East and we have to hire two people to replace him. At any rate, in recognition of the service that you've given to the community, we have gotten together a proclamation and I'm going to move that the board adopt this proclamation and I'll read it for the benefit of those in attendance. Proclamation as to Sergeant Eric East. Whereas we honor those who generously give their time and talents to improve their communities and whereas Springfield Township Board of Trustees deems it necessary to highlight the accomplishments and bestow honor on township employees who are committed to excellence and consistently strive to improve our community and whereas Sergeant Eric East is one of those people as he has devoted 28 years of exemplary service as a Springfield Township police officer. Now therefore, we, the Springfield Township Board of Trustees, in recognition of his devotion and service to the township of Springfield, honor Sergeant Eric East on his retirement May 31, 2023. I move adoption of that proclamation.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Eric, who did you bring with you tonight?
My wife, Mommy, my son Dane, daughter Caitlin, my husband Alec, and my granddaughter, new granddaughter, George.
How old is she?
One month.
One month, very cool. Sergeant East, enjoy this recognition this evening because you have accomplished so much in your career. Springfield Township is definitely a better place to live, work, and visit because of you. Sergeant East, you've had a tremendous impact on this department and this community. You've built powerful relationships with church leaders, with senior citizens, with business owners, with residents, with members of this department. Your position and dedication have played an integral part in the success of our police department. Before coming to Springfield, Sergeant East served the United States Navy from 1986 to 1993. Sergeant East started his career as a reserve officer in 1995 until he was promoted to full-time police officer in 97. He was promoted to sergeant in November 2006. Sergeant East has also served in multiple roles in his career. Sergeant East oversaw the training program, he was our public information officer, he was a tactical member of the Metro SWAT team, Sergeant East worked in the detective bureau and helped with recruiting and training new police officers. I pulled some significant incidents that I thought I would like to share with everybody tonight, some commendations that Sergeant East got in his career. This is a letter of commendation. This is from August 14th. I'd like to take this opportunity to commend you on your outstanding job on saving a human life from a mobile trailer home fire. You entered the mobile trailer home that was on fire and engulfed with smoke. You were able to pull the homeowner from the trailer after crawling on the floor and yelling to the owner in the other part of the trailer. I would like to recognize Officer Eric East for his outstanding job that he did on September 1st, 2004, which ultimately led to the capture of two bank robbers. These two suspects robbed the First Merritt Bank in Lake Moore, Bank 1 in Springfield Township. Officer East showed outstanding initiative on this date. With only a vehicle description and some good old-fashioned police work, Officer East located the vehicle. With further investigation, he was able to determine that he had located the suspect vehicle that was used to commit a bank robbery hours earlier. Following up the investigation, positively linked both suspects to numerous home invasions in the township. Much of the stolen property was later recovered and returned to the residence. During my 10 years as a police officer, I can honestly say that Officer East's performance on September 1st was one of the finest self-initiated examples of police work that I've ever seen. Signed, Sergeant Gat. Did a good job, too.
I was hurt.
Okay, on this date, on, this is January 13th, 2003, I have six of these, so just a few more. This date, 2016, 2003, I'm sorry. At 2:17 hours, Officer East was patrolling his assigned district when he observed a vehicle on the railroad tracks east of Skelton Road. Officer East advised dispatch about the car that he had also observed, a train west on Skelton Road heading towards the vehicle. Officer East quickly pulled his cruiser up behind the tracks, turned his overhead lights, and ordered to signal the train to stop. Officer East had observed the vehicle's backup lights and that the vehicle was attempting to back up towards Skelton Road directly at the oncoming train. East ran towards the vehicle to warn the occupants of the two males out of the car. He then ran towards Skelton Road, shining his flashlight at the train. After getting the train stopped approximately 500 feet from the vehicle, he returned to the vehicle. Both males were back in the car. Again, he ordered them back out. So I don't know why they went back in the car. There's actually more, but that's kind of the gist of what he did. Great job, Eric. I want to recognize, this is a letter of commendation, I want to take this opportunity to recognize outstanding job performance on the apprehension of two suspects for an aggravated burglary 1170 West Parkway on October 8th, October 28th, 2000. It was your initiative and your determination that led to the arrest of the two suspects at the scene and later arrest of the other two suspects of this burglary. A letter of commendation, I would like to acknowledge and commend you on the arrest and the conviction of three suspects who committed seven burglaries within the township May of 1998. Your alertness while responding to the burglaries on a burglary call on May 5th, 1998, started the investigation of the three suspects. Then you continued your investigation way into the early morning hours of May 6th, 1998. This culminated in the suspects being charged, property recovered, and finally the conviction of the three suspects. You are to be commended for your outstanding job performance and your determination to bring this investigation to a successful conclusion. I would like to commend Officer Eric East on his alertness on the night of the AutoZone duct tape robbery. On this night, on January 30th, 2003, at approximately 23:30 hours, the AutoZone on Canton Road was robbed at gunpoint by two males. The clerks were bound with duct tape and placed in the women's restroom. Officer East was on scene checking the area of the Limbo's parking lot. By the footprints in the snow, it appeared the suspects may have parked at the Limbo's lot and walked up the hill to AutoZone and then came back down the hill to the car. Officer East was checking the area where he believed the footprints led back to a possible getaway car. He found a set of car keys with a vehicle description and a partial VIN number written on a plastic key fob. It appeared the keys came from a used car dealer or rental business. Sergeant Hofus was able to construct the entire VIN through further investigation. Two suspects were identified from the keys and later arrested in Cogge Falls. So that in itself, congratulations, Jerry. I know these young guys are like, "Really? You did a great job out here, Eric." Really did. So when Sergeant East leaves this job and retires to a better life, some of us will be jealous, some of us will be sad, some may even be happy. Just kidding, Eric, nobody's going to be happy. Maybe Lonnie will be happy, the rest of us won't. But he's also going to free opportunities for new officers to fill those shoes that Eric wore and take on some of the responsibilities that Eric had here. Sergeant East, you'll be missed. We're going to miss your humor. We're going to miss you teasing everybody in the morning as you're walking down the hallway. We're going to miss your antics in the patrol room and we're definitely going to miss your sarcasm. We know in law enforcement, in the law enforcement life, there is a fellowship which lasts long after the uniforms are hung in the back of the closet. You will still look at people suspiciously. You will see what others don't see or see what they choose to ignore. You will always look at the rest of the law enforcement world with a respect for what they do. This evening provides us an opportunity to celebrate, given the fact when somebody retires, they've worked hard for a number of years to this result. So congratulations for that. At the same time, it's going to be difficult because we are going to miss you, Eric. So what I wish for you as you ease into retirement, that in your heart, don't forget, ever forget the impact that you've made on others in your career. Providing a service that very few would ever be willing to do. Sergeant East, remember that you are still a member of the greatest fraternity that the world has ever known. Now it is time to spend with your family, have fun being a grandpa. Sergeant East, I want to thank you for your service to our country, to this police department and this community. Congratulations. First, I have two things for you. You go box here. We have Officer Roberts together, Sergeant Roberts together. Nice. You have that. We also have this for you.
So I just want to thank the people here. I want to thank the citizens of Springfield for, you know, supporting us throughout the years. Always had our backs, always been with us when we were going through hard times. And I hope, we can't solve all problems, but I hope we've made some type of impact on the problems that you have. To you guys, you'll always be my brothers, no matter what. And look next to you, those are your brothers, everyone. You know what? There are places out there that pay more money, but I don't think you'll ever find a place with the camaraderie you have. You might not like one, and you know why, and the home run, you'll end up loving the meal. So I do want to thank the Board of Trustees, present, past, for all your support throughout the years. David Seer, too, thank you. Always supported the police department and it's been really appreciated. I also lasted five chiefs. And I do want to give thanks to them. I see Chief Rovers here. Want to thank you for guiding my career and keeping me on track. Chief Money Penny is here. Thanks for coming out and promoting me to sergeant years ago. So I obviously appreciate that, too. Chief Blaisdell couldn't make it. He hired me, but he didn't call me and tell me that he was happy for me, I guess. And then obviously Chief Simone, who's been an anchor these last few years that you've been here for us.
Thank you.
We've really done a lot for this department and our guidance and in a good direction.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. So on that note, thank you, everybody, and God bless.
You want to announce your recess?
Yes. For those in attendance, there is a reception in the hallway. Is that where you're going to sit up?
Yes.
And for that purpose, this board is going to stand in recess for 10, 15 minutes. Thank you. She'll be involved.
She's had enough, I guess.
Were you going to...
Yeah, I got all those red cushions.
Okay.
I think I'm just going to say, all the red cushions on the table. I got, I'm going to tell you what. Kelly's got my email, too, if you want to, just, you know.
Okay.
We don't, Kelly, don't hold me over and then Seer.
Yeah, we're ready.
We don't want all this icing on.
I have my phone, but I didn't see her.
She left her phone sitting here.
Okay.
I'll go find her.
It would be helpful, but we can go ahead with a couple of matters.
Yeah, we can.
Why don't ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen?
There she is.
We're going to resume our meeting. I think, Mrs. Chapman, you have a couple of matters that are of administrative nature.
Do I?
Yes.
Sorry. You start on the back. All right.
No, we didn't start with that.
No. We should be starting now. Okay, you have a couple administrative matters.
I move to dispense with reading of the minutes and approve the minutes today.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
I move to instruct the fire chief to prepare a five-year budget with proposed future levy modifications and be prepared to present to the board at the workshop scheduled for June 15th.
I would second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
You have payment of bills and...
Payment of bills.
It's all right. I think it might be a good idea.
I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by the fiscal officer subject to audit.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman? Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
I move to approve the estimate from Justice Company LLC in the amount of $19,750 for 900-foot trail extension from Springfield Township High School to the Spartan Trail and paid from fund line 1000610730.
I would second that. This would bring the trail from the south side of the high school complex, and particularly the parking lot, due west and down terrain to meet the grass area of the trolley car line. I seconded the motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro, just as, by way of explanation, we have a road levy that expires this year, if not renewed or replaced in some manner. And so we need to determine from the fiscal officer a couple options?
Yes.
Is that the motions that have been presented to us?
Yes. These next resolutions are to ask the county fiscal office to let us know how much each particular mill, each particular levy will bring in. So, and then we can decide from there which one we would like to...
So we're not making any decisions tonight on the levy?
No, not at all. This is just for informational purposes. I move to approve a resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing 1.5-mill tax levy and request the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the current tax valuation of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that replacement levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705-191.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. I move to approve a resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing 1.5-mill tax levy with an increase of .5 mil for a new 2-mill tax levy and request the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the current tax valuation of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that replacement levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705-191.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. I move to approve a resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing 1.5-mill tax levy with an increase of .75 mil for a new 2.25 mil tax levy and request the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the current tax valuation of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that replacement levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705-191.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. I move to approve a resolution declaring it necessary to replace an existing 1.5-mill tax levy and request the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the current tax valuation of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that replacement levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705-192.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. And lastly, I move to approve a resolution declaring it necessary to replace an existing 1.5-mill tax levy with an increase of .5 mil for a new 2-mill tax levy and request the Summit County Fiscal Officer to certify the current tax valuation of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that replacement levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705-192. I lost it.
Okay. Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. And lastly, for the Fire Department...
What?
This is the first one for the Fire Department, right? So, yeah. For the Fire Department, I move to amend motion 247-21 to change the amount from $87,000 to $100,721.45 for the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe SUV and a Silverado pickup truck from Tin Lally Chevrolet. Let me explain. This was back in '21, we had to put the order in back then because that's how long it was taken to get vehicles, so we didn't know the exact price. The Silverado pickup truck came in, we've had for about six months now, and then the, we got a call today that the Chevy Tahoe is ready, but the cost is $13,000 more than it was two years ago. So that is the motion, just to amend the original motion from $87,000 to $100,721.45.
Then that's for two vehicles?
For two vehicles, yes, for both vehicles.
And funded out of the Fire Department budget?
Yes.
Okay, I would second. It should have a fund line. It is...
It was on the original motion, yes.
But it, do you...
I can put it in.
Yeah, put it in, but it is a Fire Department's fund line.
Okay. Put the fund line in, okay. Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Okay. We have some matters dealing with conditions of property in the township, and I guess I'll take them in the order presented. Is there anybody present who wants to speak on the issue of the condition at 529 James I do want to indicate that the condition on James Avenue, 529 James Avenue, Akron 44312, which is a parcel number 51-03655, has come to the attention of our zoning department and also to this board. The condition at that particular property has been a matter that the zoning department has been trying to work with the property owner since May 3rd of 2022. This board has received a report from the zoning administrator of a condition of refuse, junk, and other debris at 529 James Avenue. I've given you the parcel number. Proper notice has been given to the property owner under the Springfield's nuisance property standards and procedures, the notice being to clean up, remove, or otherwise abate the condition, but the condition remains. And I might say multiple notices. Pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 505.87, I move to declare the condition on the property at 529 James Avenue, being parcel number 51-03655, to constitute a nuisance, that an order be issued to the property owner to abate the nuisance by removal of all items detailed on the administrator, that's zoning administrator's, report, and that be done within seven days of the notice. And failing that, this board shall act to abate the nuisance, remove the refuse and debris with the cost, the total cost incurred of the abatement, to be certified to the Summit County Fiscal Officer to be a lien upon parcel 51-03655. That's my motion.
Roll call, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
The next property, the condition, the issue being the condition at 1025 Onondago Trail. Anybody here to speak on that? Let me indicate for the record that the problem with this property has been longstanding. This board has given way too much opportunity for the property owner there. We've attempted to work with him. The board recently, not the board, the zoning administrator recently sent notice to the property owner, and that's one in a succession of notices. The board has received a report from the zoning administrator of a condition of refuse, junk, and other debris at 1025 Onondago Trail, which is parcel number 51-10367. Proper notice has been given to the property owner under Springfield's nuisance property standards and procedures to clean up, remove, or otherwise abate the condition. However, it does remain. Pursuant to revised Code 505.87, I move to declare the condition on the property at 1025 Onondago Trail, parcel number 51-10367, to constitute a nuisance, and that an order be issued to the property owner to abate the nuisance by removal of all items detailed on the administrator's report, and that be done within seven days. And within seven days of the notice. And failing that, this board shall act to abate the nuisance, remove the refuse and debris with the cost, and I might say the total cost incurred of the abatement, to be certified to the Summit County Fiscal Officer to be a lien upon parcel number 51-10367.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Hey, you know when you first started this, when I... It's been almost the first time that you've identified the property owner?
About 20 years now?
Fifteen, twenty.
We have struggled for many years.
You don't have a date?
I don't have a date off the top of my head, but I would have, let's see. There have been times when that property's been before this board, and there's been some improvements, not much. And then time goes by. I would say, in my memory, the time period I've been on this board, it, we've struggled with that, and it's time to be done.
The only reason I ask is the last one you said, May 3rd, 2022, was when we first informed the property owner. Now, if we have a pattern on when we can act...
This is longer than that.
Yeah, this one...
This one's, I understand, has been way longer than a year.
A number of years.
Number of years.
I don't have the exact date. I know at one time, we sought the prosecutor's help, we sought the health department's help, we sought the building department's help. There was a period when I think that there was a resolve to proceed, and for some reason, it didn't happen. So we're done, we're going to go forward. I can't give you an exact date. I don't know the exact date. If I said 10 years...
Probably would be longer.
Yes. So we're going to deal with it. Now, we have the property, may I go on? We have the property at 1840 Orchard Lane. We have, dealing with 1840 Orchard Lane since August 2 of 2022. And we have given this property owner plenty of opportunity to clean it up. The board has received a report from the zoning administrator of a condition of refuse, junk, and other debris at 1840 Orchard Lane, being parcel number 51-06937. Proper notice has been given to the property owner under Springfield's nuisance standard, property standards and procedures to clean up, remove, or otherwise abate the condition, but it remains. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 505.87, I move to declare the condition on the property at 1840 Orchard Lane, parcel number 51-06937, to constitute a nuisance, that an order be issued to the property owner to abate the nuisance by the removal of all items detailed on the administrator's report, and that that be done within seven days. And failing that, the board shall act to abate the nuisance, remove the refuse and debris with the cost, and I, again, the total cost incurred of the abatement, to be certified to Summit County Fiscal Officer to be a lien upon the parcel at 51-06937.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Okay. As a result of this meeting, the zoning administrator has been instructed to issue a copy of our order tomorrow. I am compelled to follow the revised code. There'll be a formal notice that goes to them. There's a period of seven days. Based on what's happened in the past, we're not optimistic, and so it is the board's resolve to go forward to clean up the situation that exists. If any members who are interested in this, you can see what we have marked in a report to us by the zoning department of the materials that we're instructing to be removed. This same list of materials is what will be given to a company with instructions to Okay. Is there any other motions? Are there, is there anybody here that wants to speak on the matter?
I do.
Okay. We need to have you step to the podium.
My name's Leslie Staylor. I live on the other side of Joe, or whoever lives at 1840 Orchard Lane. What kind of things are you guys going to have removed from the property?
That's what I just said, that, and I know that, yeah, I could read it to you, because these are things that our standards say constitute a nuisance, wrecked junk and/or abandoned motor vehicles that are not in completely enclosed building. Damage to such vehicles could include missing wheels, tires, body parts, motors, and/or transmissions, deflated tires, broken or missing windows, discarded and/or dismantled motor vehicle materials or parts, including but not limited to motors, engines, doors, windows, body parts, tires, mufflers, tailpipes, transmission frames, and/or axles, radiators, discarded or used materials such as scrap metals, used building materials, lumber doors, gutters, windows, roof, shingles, insulation, aluminum, or vinyl siding, glass, plastic, iron, paper rags, cordage, barrels, tires, cardboard, cloth, styrofoam, household or industrial appliances such as, or but not limited to, ovens, stoves, refrigerators, furniture, washers, dryers, heating, and/or air conditioning units, computers, hot water tanks, any garbage, including not limited to food and/or organ waste.
Is there, isn't there an...
Organic waste, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Isn't there an ordinance or something about having a refrigerator laying there with the doors on it? I mean, what's to say there isn't a kid inside that refrigerator right now? I mean, what's to say there isn't a kid inside that refrigerator right now? It's been there for months. The doors are still on it. Somebody could have opened a refrigerator, crawled in there and they could be in there.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
And he brings gla, grass clippings in by the truckloads and dumps them. Isn't there ordinance against that? He's brought truckloads and truckloads of grass clippings and just-
Well, we may have to-
He takes them way back and dumps them.
Yeah, we may have to review that situation. I think we have quite a mouthful of things that we're gonna deal with and then we'll look at what remains.
I had, I had the hardest trouble with Joe. I have the, I have somebody come out and find my stake. I mean, this seems like a nonsense thing, but to me, it's important. This is my point. This is my property. I put stones around it. Joe moved them. I moved them back. Joe moved them again. Four times he's moved them. Now he's run a line, an orange line, oh, this is a property line, this is a property line. Now he's put a railroad tie there. Yeah, but my stones are still this far from my point. I have pictures of them. They're that point. I mean, it's just the fact that he gets on my property, I don't get on Joe's property. And then he threatened my husband on the 17th, when a truck that he wasn't even home about pulled on our property and we went up over the hill and said, could you move it? And he said, he approached my husband, oh, he's in the car, and he said, leaned out and he said, you want a piece of me? Come and get it. Now, that's, he just, he gives everybody the finger, he gets, he's rude to us, he's not a nice person. And he's got, he was up there today and he was, he comes home and it's like 7, 8 o'clock in the evening and later, and he starts making noise and tearing up property and everything out there. He's a very big nuisance.
We understand your aggravation and we want to do something about the condition of the property.
But what takes so long? I don't understand. I mean, like that property before you said it'd been like three years, four years. What's so long?
Well, there's lots of things in, in play. Number one, we try to get people to be responsible and to do it without us having to expend tax money. And, and just so you know, I mean, we'll certify the cost to the parcel, but there's many parcels in this township that the taxes never get paid.
Yeah, I know.
So we, we genuinely want people to solve their problems and not make you, and you, and you, and you pay for it.
You know that Joe's running a business-
He pays taxes.
Pardon me? Joe's running a business off of his property. He's not even paying taxes or anything for that.
I know. It's, it's his grandfather that technically will have the problem. And, and we're resolved, we, we extended as much time, we thought there were some progress, it didn't happen, and he, he shows us to be totally uncooperative, we're going to proceed on this.
Okay.
Okay?
I did go out there almost every week and tried to get him to comply so we didn't have to go this route so it would take longer. And he kind of gave me hope for a few months and then we decided it just wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, he's, he's just-
I mean, but I, I tried really hard because I didn't want it to get this far because I know how long it takes after that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if more has to be said. What's that?
Have you been there yourself?
Yes, I have.
What do you think?
It's appalling.
You want to look that story then?
That's why we're doing what we're doing here.
What are you doing?
Okay, I'm Bob Moore, in Oatman Lane, and I live on the opposite side of 1840. But, and I understand, things are getting cleaned up and things are being forced for him to clean up. I understand that. But I have a problem with his loud noise. He will do everything he can to be noisy every day. He's got a red Ford Ranger that has no muffler, no bumper, and he'll get out there and he'll run it around the house and he'll get out on the road and run it and just be loud and noisy. It's a noise nuisance and he's breaking the nuisance law that we have.
Do you call the police when that happens? Because that, do you call the police department?
I did. I called the police and one of the officers came out and he talked to him, he said he wouldn't do it again, but he said it was a noise issue. And, but then he told me that he could run it on his property, but not out on the road. And it's like, wait a minute, a noise is a noise, whether he's on the road or on the property. And it's worse on the property because we're next to his house, we're next to the house. And it just, it's, I just lost it the other day. I was like, I just, I've had enough. And we've let him get away with it and he's been getting away with it and he's done that several times. And he uses his other vehicles, he'll use his tractors just to run up and down between the property. He just is a vengeful person. He has to clean up his property and he's angry that he does not want to do it. So Leslie and I, and even Carl, all of us, we, we got issues with this guy because he's, he's vengeful. And so there's other things that I want to do bring up. With that red truck that he has, that he starts and runs, he, I was not home today and my husband texted me and told me that he had left. He had left in the truck and left for about an hour, was out somewhere in the neighborhood somewhere, running with that car. And that is polluting the air. And the EPA could find him because he has no exhaust system on it whatsoever, nothing. And no license, no bumper, it came with a, it should have a bumper. But I would like for that thing to go. I'm telling you, it's just, if that could be the one first thing to, to leave, I'd like to see that.
If the plates are expired, it will be towed?
It has never had a license, it's been there since November the 20, in '22. And he never had a license, he'll never get one because there's no way he could pass E check.
Well, he did get a letter from the police department with, with the vehicles, the junk vehicles, and if they're not gone, they will be towed.
Okay. And then I did mention that there's also a box truck in the back that can't run, it doesn't run, the transmission is out, and it's in way in the back. You can't see it from the road?
No. I, I'm not sure if that's right, I'm gonna have to go back and look, but I thought he plated that and, and had it running. Is that not the same?
No, not the box truck. It has, it doesn't have a transmission. So it's back there. He has a picture of it in the back, woods, back in the back, you have to go back-
That'll be towed as well if, if it's a junk vehicle, if it doesn't have updated plates and it doesn't run.
Yeah, right, it is.
It'll be towed. I'm sorry?
Expiring registration.
Okay, then it'll be towed.
Yeah. And it's back there by the wetland. We have trouble with that wetland too, you know, and he's-
He was fined by the EPA, he said, for the-
You know what, I really don't know if that's so because I talked to Kara Hardisty with the EPA and she could not find that.
Okay, that's what he told me.
Yeah, I know, I know. But like we said before, take it with a grain of salt.
Why, I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're doing everything we can-
Oh, I know, I understand that, but I do have some more questions just to, so that I know what you guys are gonna do, okay? So then there's, there's loads of dirt he's got coming in. There was loads of dirt last year, there were piles all around the back. And now he's got more loads of dirt coming in. He had a dump truck come in about three different loads and then he had another different dump truck that's extremely loud and, oh my gosh, that, it's awful, it's awful. And he's brought in loads of dirt, probably about four loads of dirt, two pickup trucks with loads of dirt has come in. Does anybody know why he's bringing in that dirt? It's piles of it in the back, just-
The last time I was out there and then he told me to get in line, I, I quit going out there because he wasn't going to cooperate. I don't think the dirt was there at the time, the last time I was out there.
You probably didn't see it because it's over by our property towards the back. It's on our side. That's probably why you didn't see it.
Pictures.
Yeah, we have pictures of it. You know what, you're more than welcome anytime to come on our property and, and go back there and get pictures.
Well, I know he's reached out to me a few times, but because it's in legal hands, I don't respond or deal with him anymore because we have, we have a lawyer involved, so.
Okay, so then the dirt, will you?
I, I don't know, we, we rent the dirt, I, I don't know.
I have no idea. If he's getting ready to fill his property, it's gonna, it's gonna affect ours. Because we have, we have wetland anyway right there, it's come up closer to our home.
Have you called the EPA then, since then?
I would have to call the EPA. I think when I talked to a guy at Summit Soil and Water, I think he told me that I'd have to get ahold of the US Army Corps of Engineers because they would have something to do with the dirt fill. So I'm not certain. But he keeps on having it come in and that dump truck doesn't even have a license, it doesn't have a license on the truck. So I don't know where it's coming from. And then there's also, I have a question about his driveway. He has the driveway on the one side and he's made another driveway in between our homes. So my question is, he can't do any more than 35% of his front yardage of driveway?
Does he have gravel now? Does he have gravel?
No, it's dirt and he throws dust everywhere and he brings those loud trucks and those trailers right in between there and hits those rods and it's, the sound is unbelievable. I mean, that is all deliberate. I mean, we've-
Even though it doesn't have gravel, he still uses it as a-
I, I know, I was just asking. I'm still, I'm still, we're trying to learn a lot about zoning. I do go out every week, but I still have a lot to learn.
Maybe we better have Jessica review that.
Yeah, we can ask our administrator about the dirt.
Okay.
Well, the one thing on the dirt, if, if you talk to the EPA and they recommended that you talk with the Army Corps, I would go ahead and do it.
Okay.
I mean, I think any, any pressure that we can bring, bring to bear is good.
Okay.
To stop some of the behavior. But, you know, this is one we want to, we're done expecting him to do something because he doesn't intend to.
The only thing he does is take it out on us.
Keeps bringing these loads of dirt and grass and leaves and wood chips in there. The stuff comes from other people's properties. Whether they're jobs or anything, he's doing it or not.
Is he involved in some particular business activity?
Well, he said he does lawn care and he does snow removal.
Does what?
Now, that's my understanding, his storage should be in a building. That's what it requires, right?
Right.
Yeah, and that does not. And also I have his trailer, his travel trailer, that's supposed to be on gravel or cement, but it's out in his yard.
What about the dump truck? Is the dump truck gone? The big old dump truck?
No, it's still there.
That's still there?
Yeah. All of it is still there. And he has taken stuff from the front and moved it in the back and the back has just gotten worse. It's awful. When I look out my kitchen window every morning, it's a, it's a sight you just don't want to start off with every morning. That's what I start off with every morning, it's-
I, I know it looks bad and I do apologize.
Oh, you don't have to apologize.
But I, but we have, I've worked with him, I've tried so hard, harder than anything I've tried.
I know. I understand where you're coming from. You can be nice to him, but he's gonna be, he's vindictive. He, he's gonna do what he wants. He's not, he, he doesn't, I don't think you would have to worry about him doing anything threatening you, but he needs to, he's always gotten his way and he just needs to be a stern, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, and you're gonna get rid of this, and this is coming in, and you just have to be stern with the man, you know?
That's what we're doing.
If it's on his own, if he's on his own, he won't do it.
Well, that's what this is doing.
That's what that's gonna do, I know.
This is an order and-
Yes.
We're not, like a company's gonna come in and clean it all up.
Yep. And when I heard that, it was like, good. Well- Dean Lusano.
There's some things that you might say, well, no, he can keep that, he started dispense with these posts and a post like this.
I would call that-
Disgusting looking.
I would call that discarded materials.
The posts are in the ground, he started putting fence, but he doesn't have a permit for that.
Right. Yes, he needs a permit.
But I don't think we can pull that out, can we? Do we have to?
Well, I'd, I'd have to see that exactly what it looks like, but.
But I mean, I don't know if we can or if we make him pull a permit, I'm not, again, I gotta talk to Jessica.
Those need to be pulled out. It's, it's not a nice looking fence, it's not giving a nice looking fence. The fence has to be nice. It has to be pleasant to my, it can't be ugly. And if he's gonna just pull up posts, he'll just go to it, leaning this way and that, what is he gonna put up against them? Pallets?
Is it just posts? There's no fence at all, just posts?
Just posts. And they're in holes and it's not, it's, they're just leaning every which way, they're not, the dirt is not pushed in there and they're all different levels and it's, it's an attempt and it's awful looking. And it's, but you answered my questions and I hope that this is gonna get resolved. Thanks.
Okay. You're welcome.
My problem with the guy can, is he don't get, can I say it?
Did we get names?
He doesn't give a-
My, Mrs. Price gets on me because sometimes I don't have, you have to state your name.
Oh, Carl Matuschi, 2050 Orchard Lane.
What was the lady's name for?
Barbara?
Yeah, Barbara. Yeah, Barbara, yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you, I ran a business out of that place for 25 years. I've been there 32.
Out of what place, lawns?
No. I had an irrigation and drainage business.
Oh, okay.
Anyhow, now, everybody's dead now that, you know, been around there, she knows. But anyhow, I got along with them because I didn't make noise. I didn't make messes at home. And I would help them out, but this guy is a loose cannon. His garbage cans and his garbage cans is on my side of the road and they don't leave. You don't take them to the house. I mean, it doesn't sound bad to you, but have it, have the people throwing stuff at the cans. And what else? Trucks are up and down here. Want to know what I wrote down? I do appreciate you guys paving that road. That was sweet of you, but there won't be nothing left of it because you ought to see the trucks coming down there. It's a buggy road. You agree?
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know, it's, it's up to you guys, but it don't seem like you guys are excited about it because you don't have to deal with it.
But that's not true. I was out there every week for almost a year. I do care.
What's happened in a year?
Exactly, but sir, now that we've done this, this is going to be a process. I tried to avoid that process.
I had a couple pieces of equipment that was old, that sat in a position that you could see. Anyhow, I get, you gotta get rid of that. I, yes, sir, I will. Couple weeks later, it's the hell out of there. And I kind of liked it because I got it out of it. The guy across the street got pinched on not having his Duncan, pinched on not having license plates on his vehicle. He went out and bought on plates for these old cars and you can't even see it from the road. So anyhow, you, you messed with me, you messed with him and I complied. I don't think this guy is, besides that curve, there's gonna be somebody die. I'm serious. I went off on a truck driver the other day and it was stupid of me, telling him to slow down because the day before he went around that curve, probably 25 miles an hour in a full-size truck with a Detroit Diesel in it going, making all the noise in the world. I can see why they don't use them. Anyhow, he came down the road again and a police car is following him. And that day, I did look the back of his truck and he didn't have a license plate. Now whoever's hauling the stuff, not him. Anyhow, there's a police car behind it and I'm giving him the high sign, he's got him, he didn't do nothing.
The police didn't do nothing?
No. No. I didn't call him or anything. I don't call the police on people until I think I could, you know, if I can straighten it out.
Should've called him. I mean, it's the only way that, I mean, if we, if we, if we try to follow up...
There was a police car behind this truck. If there's no plate on it, I hope he would've noticed it.
Should've.
We're in Indiana, correct? He dumped three loads in.
No, no, no.
The property was a police car. When the police car was right in front of the property at eighteen-four, at Orchard Lane, when that dump truck pulled out, the police car went down the end of the road and turned around and went back out and was behind him there.
Do you have the date and about the time? I can find out.
It was early minutes.
I'm sorry?
It was minutes, fifteen minutes.
Do you, you know the date that this happened? Because I could check with the, with Chief Simone.
Because I'm yelling at him, yay! But somebody's gonna die on that road, I, I'm telling you. Right at that curve. You do know the curve?
Yeah.
There should be a stop sign there maybe? Maybe a, a sign saying twenty miles an hour?
It was Friday.
It was Friday? Do you have approximate time?
Friday, Friday, eighth...
Nah, I don't think it was Friday, it was this week.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna...
So every time he's a nuisance, we're supposed to call the cops on him?
Okay.
That's all he loves.
Yeah.
He's gonna order to hit me too.
Okay. I'll call Simone every time.
I gotta say, I called and they said they can't do anything because of the nuisance on his property. But when he gets on the road and I disagreed, I told him, I said, that's a noise nuisance, no matter what. But he would not listen and he wouldn't do anything. So we can't get him to do anything to tell you.
Give us a chance to tie into the big problem.
Okay.
And then we'll...
I, I think he's gonna realize that we're working on this once we've cleaned his property. But once this stuff is gone, I mean, we're doing everything in our power.
If you guys want to know, I will break back the same way. And like I said, I have air, air makes and drainage makes. I can see where the EPA is going to say because he's obstructing the slow water through the ground. The trip's right there and then it might have a hard time getting through.
Okay. Let us get started on this.
Here's the truck.
Which truck is it? That truck that you're helping?
Yeah, that's the one that I'm helping. And it's a vehicle like...
You did yourself, Don, just...
That's no fun. That's no fun.
No, it is... I know, I haven't told you the reason.
One of two.
Well, that's even...
Can you send that to my company?
Carl, that's...
Now, is there more? Okay. Okay, can you send that to her? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, there are a couple other things we have to do. So, okay.
No, we have to...
No, if you can, if you, if you need to...
That is my cell phone number. And if you call the police and something's happened, then you call the...
Yeah.
You can give this lady, uh, anything.
Give what?
Okay, okay.
Text me videos and everything.
Can we have, can we have, we got a couple more things to do. And, and give us a chance to dive on this problem and then we'll see what happens out there. We know you, we have a hardcore problem, so give us a chance to...
Well, we have a new address that I guess is vindictive. The way he's taking this, these actions out on us. He's holding us responsible by being vindictive to us, okay? He's, he's actually threatening me too with his fever. And I reported it to the police.
Okay.
Okay, but then you wanna hear about this another time?
No, I, I think that, that we're, we're resolved that there's a problem we wanna deal with and as, as we get the nuisance that involves debris dealt with these other issues, yes, should be brought to the police department.
And would something have to call dispatch so there's a record of it with the department? You call, you call dispatch? I'm sorry?
Do you still want to keep on calling?
I would call every time you think that there's something going on, you need another, then we have a pattern and at least there's, there's a record.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. Okay, is there, are there other matters that need to be brought to us? There's a copy of what's gonna be given to the, to the company.
I'm ready for you, Dave. Yeah, okay, go ahead, go on.
Mr. LaFollette, you have to state your name and where you reside.
Yep, I know. My name is Steve LaFollette. I live at eleven fifty-eight West Parkway. And I also have another house at eleven twenty-eight, or eleven twenty-six West Parkway. I live along the lake over here. And I just have a question after that. I, but I wanna know, does anybody know here what happened to the water level on the lake? It is ankle deep, basically. There's no way I could get my boat in even close to the shoreline. And I don't know, you know, the dr, it hasn't rained a while, but I monitor the lake all the time. I live right next to Lloyd McVeigh, you guys know him. I, I monitor where he always had that level there and it's about nine to ten inches below that. And I, yeah, and Lloyd sold his house to another person. I helped him put his dock in. We put it in one way and he brought his boat in and he couldn't even get to the dock. So we tore it apart and we extended it out another eight feet and the boat barely hangs on right there. And I know you guys have a lot of different problems that you have to address here at the township, but I just wanted to bring that up. If you can figure out what happened to it, as the, I went over to the dam and looked at it and the water is below the dam. Nothing's even coming past it. And then the only way out is the pump station. When has it, was it turned on, turned off? When was it turned on, when it was turned off?
I will find out because I wish I had a better answer for you. But to our knowledge, it's closed, that valve is closed. We didn't open it, we didn't order it to be opened, so I will check.
I know in past, past, I know in past times, that Lake Moore, is that the camera up there?
Yeah.
Lake Moore has come over there and, and turned off the, or turned on the pumps or turned, no, turned them off. They've cut the locks off of them and everything else. And so, you know...
I don't believe that's the case. I mean, it could've been, it could've been open some time ago and forgot to be shut. But to the best of my knowledge, it is closed.
That's happened, that happened two years ago. I, I brought to attention and they found out that someone left it, you know, open and they shut it off immediately. So, you know, that's, you know, Dean and me, we, we've talked about, this is the jewel of Springfield Township. It's the diamond. It's the best thing that's ever happened with, with the township is to have this lake because a lot of townships don't have it. And, you know, I like to have some water in it, you know? I like to be boating in it and like to be swimming in it, you know, so...
Especially if it's about to get pretty warm.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's coming into the season, summers tend to be, so I don't know where it's gonna go. You know, God's the only one that can make it rain and hopefully we get some rain and it'll bring the water up. But you guys could check in on that and maybe...
Yeah.
We would, well, I mean, we, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It was just brought to my attention today. I probably should've noticed that it was low, I guess, but I don't, I don't have...
Well, yeah, we live on the lake, we live on the lake and we see it.
Yeah, to make sure. There's no reason why, I'll say this, there's no reason why we're lowering the water. So that valve should not be open. We don't have a ditch dug, so we're not doing any work somewhere where we need to lower the level, so all...
Well, that's good, but the road department mainly maintains this, basically. Maybe you can, you know, send some memos over there. We gotta pay attention to it a little more. Or maybe they are. I'm not, I'm not saying they're not, but, you know, so I appreciate the time that you gave me today. Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Delores, how many people have a right to turn on and off the valve sometimes?
Um, basically, we've been locking it up.
Yes.
So that we've been trying to control it. The mechanism technically belongs to Goodyear. Because at one time, Goodyear relied on the waters of Springfield Lake in their industrial activities. So it's, I mean, we don't know if the infrastructure is entirely in perfect condition.
Just check to see if there's a lock on it.
Right.
If there's no lock on it, then there could be possibility of somebody other than us is over there.
Yeah, but I thought you made a key statement, they're not lowering it for any reason.
Right, we're not intentionally lowering it. So if, if everything's closed up and everything, then it's just mother nature or some, or there's an issue somewhere else. But we, we are not trying to lower the water level at this time. Or for any time recently. No, I mean, you, I mean, you guys know, we typically try to lower it some in the fall, you know, before the freeze, and then you hope the snow and rain, everything comes back up.
Lake Moore can look their boats in and see when we get the boat laid like this in our side, we can't get to it. You know, we...
But I'll look, I'll check in.
All right.
And then I'll...
Ready?
I'm ready. Let me get my gavel.
David Dees, eleven eighty-four West Parkway. Um, I have a couple things. The first thing is, is about three months ago, I asked for some public accountability for the ARP, the rescue plan money that we got, on how we're spending that. When we first got it, a couple years ago, I think it was a year and a half ago, I happened to be at that meeting. And hopefully, we were gonna spend some money to help the lake. Then when I came back, I think after my heart attack, you guys said that we were gonna save three hundred and some thousand to spend on the lake. I never was given any kind of accountability on that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I wonder, is it public knowledge? Are we allowed to know?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put together a list.
Okay.
And, and get it to you.
Okay.
I don't have final here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the final figures.
Thank you. Also, hopefully, in that list, there is some kind of a bucket to where we have, to where we can spend some money to try to improve the asset that we do have out there that's the lake and so that we can maybe have some control on the level and maybe have some control on what's polluting it right now. So, you know, you mentioned some kind of a committee or informal group, that would be fine. I mean, if, if you wanna instigate that, that's fine. I'd rather go on public record with that group on what we are doing so that anytime we're questioned by the EPA or Summit County or anybody, that we can have an intelligent answer on what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Lastly, you talk about the lake level and it's we, they, who, when, whatever. I think we need a little bit better grip on who is gonna control the lake. Is it Springfield? Is it us? Is it Ted? Is it Dean? Is it Joe? Who, 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 who can be accountable for the nine inches that it is down? I have a GPS that I put on it and according to the Corps of Engineers back in nineteen sixty-two or whatever it was, it's supposed to be eleven sixty-four, well, it's nine inches below that right now. So I don't know what happened to the water, but, you know, that's not up to me. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know. I'm not the accountability guy that opened that valve or closed it or whatever, dug around the dam. We all know about that episode also. So if we could get a better grip of that as the, you know, trustees on how we do control the level, it would be greatly appreciated for all the boaters and everybody, I know that. And Kelly, you made a, a statement earlier, you know, how do I know that it's soap suds? Well, you are correct, I really do not know. I mean, I know that there's, by my own testing and my own water reports that are on the Springfield website, that E. coli and wastewater is put to it. If we don't and we know, want to know, maybe some of this rescue plan money could be to testing the water. You say, okay, well, Reichmore's already testing it. I'm not, I'm not talking about them. They're, they're doing whatever they gotta do for the EPA and everything. Maybe we wanna do our own testing to say, hey, you're right, that is right there, you know?
And that's why I suggested the committee, where you guys can determine how you spend the money allotted for the...
Absolutely, you know, and, and, you know, then there's no question of the, you know...
I just don't want us to pick something and have it not work and then we're out of money. That's my scare. I want it to work.
I was there back, I was at that same point whenever the, we were talking about two, twenty-two thousand dollar, you know, thing out there that's gonna, you know, get rid of our problems and, you know, I was the same way. Well, is this tested? No, it's not.
No, but it's gotta start somewhere, right? Maybe we'll be the lucky...
We took the used car salesman's word on it and we put the damn thing in the water, I understand.
I, I will tell you, we're trying and nobody tries harder than Dean.
We're trying, we're trying.
Dean is the biggest advocate here.
We're trying, but I, I would like to speed up the process of trying before that bucket of money is gone and the water gets by the wayside and we still have foam on the beach.
But that, and that's what I don't want. I want that bucket of money to be used wisely.
Thank you.
Do you, I know that you have been an activist, particularly on matters as it relates to what EPA ought to be doing. You know, I, if it's fair to turn tables on you here, to give us a report on your most recent contacts...
Absolutely, yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna investigate all the stormwater that's going into the lake. They are gonna do that. They approved the certified complaint that I filed.
That's great.
Yes, they are gonna, they are gonna either give you a edict, probably Summit County because they're the ones putting in the sewers and everything. I don't know what they're gonna do. I showed him this, that this, all this stormwater is not getting tested or taken care of. Can you please help? And they took that certified complaint and said, yes, we're gonna help.
They give you a timeframe?
I'm sorry?
A timeframe on when they're gonna do it?
I wish, you know? It's just like everybody else. It's, I've been here for four years now on this water, you know? Do I have a timeframe? If I give you a timeframe, will you give me a timeframe?
Yeah.
Yeah, you will. Anything else?
No, that, no, that's fair. I did, you know, I'm trying through some back channels to see whether there could be movement on what I think is one of the solutions. And so far, there isn't. We, we've sought through contact with the city and also with Summit County to try to see what real movement could be made toward sanitary sewer in all of the areas that otherwise would be within the watershed. In that regard, I had a meeting with Michael Vinay, who's in charge of Summit County's system. And he, to try to add information, he had the woman who's in charge of the City of Akron's water supply that is monitoring it, I can't even pronounce her last name, Jessi.
Jessica Clachaski.
Yeah. And, and she told me that the City of Akron utilizes peroxide treatment to the, to the watershed. I asked her about the, her opinion of what we were doing by way of, you know, the ultrasound, trying to deal with the sino... way of, you know, the ultrasound, trying to deal with the cyanobacteria. And she thinks it's untested. But in mitigation of the blooms, they tried to track the development in the areas that, that there seemed to be the strongest source. And they are attempting a, the use of peroxide spray. And they think that it, it, it has an effect on the blooms.
That, uh...
But she also recommends, she has other thoughts, and I thought it was pretty educational. She recommended as one of the tools, which I understand Michelle is working on, to get in front of us, is to enact riparian buffer in all of the areas around the lake. Now, we can't deal with what already exists, but we've been lax over the years in not imposing a riparian buffer.
By buffer, you're meaning retention ponds?
No. That, that there wouldn't be, there would be an area around the lake wherever there's not pre-existing construction, that there be a setback in distance.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, we have, we have a number of ditches that lead into the lake. And if there's any upland areas that would feed those ditches, you know, we'll try to, if we can, do something to prevent additional construction or development. The, the county engineer, I think I sent you...
You did.
Two studies.
Mm-hmm.
And the one, it was really the ideas that were proposed by Michelle and also Tracy Fast to the county engineer, who told us a year, I don't know how long ago it was, 18 months ago, that they were gonna spend some of the ARP money on the lake. But their approach is, they got a study before they decide what they're gonna do. The one study that they're commissioning, and I asked recently where they were on this, and they were signing the consultants on it, the, the one study had to do directly with trying to identify areas that could be used to limit the flow onto the lake. That, that was their, their study number two, the preliminary waters, watershed study, to identify upland areas within the Springfield Lake watershed that are suitable for water quality basins and other best practices that will reduce pollutants and peak flows in stormwater runoffs flowing to the lake. I mean, it's encouraging that, that they're talking about doing this and they're supposedly have signed a consultant's contract. It just takes a while. It would be nice if it was four years ago.
It's back to the timeframe thing, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I, I can't...
You know, I also gave you a, a study and I talked to the EPA about it also, about the, the JED program that was devised back in 94, to where we are supposed to already have sewers all the way around through there and along the lake. It's supposed to have already been done. If you read the, the JED report, that was written and agreed by everybody. And the EPA wasn't quick to just say, well, we'll have to show that to our legal department and see what kind of leg that stands on. But, you know...
So you showed them that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and they, they, they are looking into that. You know, they, I don't know, you know, what'll come of it, whether it's just, yeah, well, that was just a wink, wink agreement, or what it was. My, my part of it was, is I'm still paying that tax. That tax gets paid every day. We don't have any more development.
Yeah, we...